It's 1:30, and I like to start on time so we can end on time. And as you can see, I am not Mayor Mahan. Mayor Mahan is unavailable today, so I am Vice Mayor Pam Foley, and I get to run the meeting today. Isn't that exciting?
Yes.
Okay. So let's... Tony, will you please call a roll?
Camei, Campos, Salas.
Present.
Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
Present.
Mulcahy.
Here.
Dwan.
Here.
Candelas.
Here.
Casey.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Camei.
Here.
Mahan, you have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Now, if you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to invocations, today's invocation will be from the Mariachi Estelon, Estalar, and Councilmember Salas will please tell us more.
This is my second invocation. It's such a treat to be able to introduce, reintroduce probably some of you to Mariachi Estalar. They've been around San Jose since 2014. They have passion, tradition, excellence in Northern California, and they are going to be in the Mariachi Festival, which is returning to downtown San Jose July 13th of this year. So I'm very excited to present just a wonderful group, Mariachi Escalar. Viva San Jose, guys. Take it away.
Yes, hi. My name is Jorge, and I'm here with Mariachi Estalar. Just like Councilmember Salas said, we are here to spread the word of our Mariachi Festival that's making its return in District 3, SS Chavez Park. So we are, you know, we're very excited. We're looking forward to it, and I hope that we can continue counting on you guys' support to bring this event back. Thank you. That was just a little taste of what you're to expect at the Mariachi Festival. We're going to have my group, Mariachi Estalar, and a couple of other local groups that we're performing as well, and I hope to see you guys there. Thank you.
Thank you. That was so much fun. Will Councilmember Campos please join me at the podium?
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you to our Vice Mayor Foley and my colleagues on the council for recognizing March as Youth Arts Month in San Jose and for your continued support of arts in our community. I am excited to see so many art leaders here today because your work ensures that creativity isn't just a privilege for some, but a foundation for all. You create the spaces where young people discover their voices, build confidence, and find a true sense of belonging, and I am proud to be the council liaison to the Arts Commission. As an educator, I have seen firsthand how transformative arts can be. They are more than just a form of self-expression. They are a bridge to critical thinking, problem-solving, and innovation. Whether through music, theater, painting, or dance, the arts open new pathways for young people to engage with the world around them, and they don't just shape individuals, they strengthen our entire city. I truly, fully believe that, and I'm excited to see the arts make San Jose more vibrant, more connected, and a better city for us all. Arts have the power to equip our youth with creativity and the resilience that they need to succeed. A city that invests in its artists, in its storytellers, in its young creatives, is a city that invests in its future. To all the dedicated art leaders and educators here today, thank you. Your work ensures that every young person, no matter their background, has the opportunity to dream, create, and be seen. And with that, I am honored to present this proclamation recognizing March as Youth Arts Month in San Jose, and I will hear from our Vice Mayor.
You're going to speak first? Why don't you speak first, and then I'll close it up? How about that?
That sounds good. Thank you for inviting us, the Santa Clara County Office of Education, for, and for supporting arts education in our schools by presenting March as Youth Arts Month. I am Dr. Sofia Fojas, the Arts Coordinator of the Santa Clara County Office of Education. I lead Artspiration, SCCOE's arts initiative that began in 2007. In my role, I support districts implementing a comprehensive arts education, co-manage the Arts Ed Connect Grant with SV Creates, present the Viva Mariachi Showcase at the Mexican Heritage Plaza, and conduct the Young Artist Showcase, which houses the most extensive collection of youth arts in any county office in the state. Youth Arts Month was started in 1961 by the National Art Education Association to recognize arts as a critical part of a well-rounded child's education. The goals of the initiative are encouragement and commitment to the arts by students, community organizations, businesses, governmental agencies, and individuals. Research shows how participation in the arts develops a path to creative self-expression, instills a sense of belonging, prepares students to thrive in a 21st-century workforce, and connects families and communities to rich cultural experiences. The positive effects of arts participation in the school are increased attendance, higher education achievement, greater confidence, and, believe it or not, higher civic engagement. Participation in the arts is critical for the success of every child in our schools. So for the county office, coming up April 3rd is our third annual Viva Mariachi Showcase at the Mexican Heritage Plaza at the School of Arts and Culture, a celebration of Mexican music and dance with special guest Mariachi Los Gavilanis from Monaco Middle School in Las Vegas. And then on March 23rd, we are celebrating arts with the theme "The Arts Builds Civic Engagement" for our Young Artist Showcase. We've held this celebration since 1997, and are the county office again with the largest collection of arts, youth arts, numbering over 1,000 pieces. On behalf of the Santa Clara County Office of Education, and as a child myself who learned the violin in 4th grade at Anderson Elementary, and went on to become a music teacher in the public schools, thank you for recognizing March as Youth Arts Month in San Jose.
On behalf of the City of San Jose, I present you with this proclamation, and I will say that Arts Month should not be March, it should be the whole year. We're focused on STEM technology, science, technology, engineering, and math, but we must add A, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. So please support the arts every chance you get. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can we take some photos?
Yes, yes.
and Engineering Fair Association?
What a perfect pairing, that it's Youth Art Month, and also here in San Jose, it is Youth Science Month. So it's great that we're putting these together. We have our old friend coming down, who's no stranger to this, to this chamber, our former Councilmember Forrest Williams, who's a member of the Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association, that's been putting on the San Jose, or the Santa Clara County Science Fair. By my math, it's been 65 years. The first science fair in Santa Clara County was in 1960. The science fair moved to San Jose Convention Center in 2000, so it's been in the San Jose Convention Center for the last 25 years. The science fair is this Thursday. It's a great event with annual participation by hundreds of students. In fact, this year, I believe that they have over 1,000 students participating in the science fair. It covers grades from grade 6 to 12. I have served as a judge for, on and off, for the last 20 years. If you ever have a chance to stop by and see what some of these students are doing, it's amazing work, amazing innovation, amazing science that's happening here by students that give me a lot of hope for our future. So I want to, today, we're giving a commendation to the Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association to thank them for all the work they've done. On the screen behind us, you'll see, last week, we invited 113 San Jose residents who were winners of the science fair last year. They came to the rotunda, and we presented them with certificates. There's a photo from that event, and we're looking forward next year to recognizing the well over 100, hopefully, students from San Jose who, again, received prizes at this year's science fair. So Forrest, say a few words.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
How's everyone today?
Fantastic.
It doesn't sound like it. You guys sound kind of muffled, like you're uncertain about where you're going to go and what you're going to do, but I'm here to support science and engineering. Now, I know there was a suggestion that we put an A in the mix to make it STEM A.
STEAM.
Which, you see A, and include art. We do include art. Engineering is art. It's foundation. You can see it everywhere you go. I defy you to put your hand on something that hasn't been touched by an engineer. Touch, or science, or mathematics. You can't live without us, and I love it. And we work hard to encourage our students. Our mission is to introduce engineering to students, to parents, to uncles, aunts, whomever comes and interface with a child. We want them to, invigorate them, because the future is how we prepare for it. The future is now. It's not someplace in the future. It is now. And help your children, encourage them, because we're going to depend on them to solve some of the many problems that we created for them. And our students are, we go to the state fair, we also go to the international fair, and we win. They look up to San Jose out of 72 countries or more. So it is significant for us to encourage our children, and they will do the best for us. Just hug them every now and then, just talk to them, reassure them. You just don't know, that's the greatest gift that was given to you, is your child. And you want to nourish them as best as you can for the future, because they will take over. And I thank you, and I want to thank the mayor, and I thank you, Councilmember Cohen, for being a part of all of this, and thank you for the recognition event and the rotunda. Those experiences, they will cherish those the rest of their lives, and you encouraged them. And I want to thank everyone, all of you, you will, thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the council, I present you with this proclamation. Thank you. Should we take a photo? Well, you should. No, you're, you're the guest. You're the important one. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda? Before we begin with our adjournment, I understand that an applicant for 10.1D, which is a land use item, has requested deferral, so I would entertain a motion to defer this item.
I'd like to make that motion to defer item 10.1B.
Are there any public comments on that item, 10.1D? Or Orders of the Day? Okay. Then let's, if no comments, let's move for a vote. Do a voice vote, it's not letting me do run a vote on that item. Sure, absolutely. All, just, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. This meeting will be adjourned in honor of Burton Smith, a U.S. Navy veteran who passed on November 9th, 2024. Through neighborhood associations, community centers, and the San Jose City Council, he brought joy to the community, brought families together, and kept many cherished traditions going in our city. Councilmember Candelas, please tell us more.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. As mentioned, today, we adjourn in loving memory of Burton, or Bert, Smith. Bert was a resident at Atria Evergreen Valley, following an extraordinary career in the U.S. Navy, and exemplary engagement with his community. He was a very well-known and well-respected leader in the Evergreen community. He served in the U.S. Navy during the Vietnam War onboard the USS Enterprise. There, he worked in avionics, where he would identify and solve equipment shortages, improving aircraft availability and the success of their combat missions. His actions and contributions earned him a Meritorious Achievement Award from the U.S. Navy that acknowledged his technical expertise, leadership, and dedications during combat operations. Bert's integrity was at the heart of everything he did, whether it was in his military service or with his community work. He consistently demonstrated a strength that radiated to those around him. Whether it was an important community gathering, conference, or summit, Bert was inclusive and respected all perspectives. In fact, Bert was often asked to play the role of Santa Claus, not only because he dressed up, but because he also naturally had a warm, joyful, quote-unquote, "Santa feel." This, as you can see on the screen, this is something he's done, and he did for decades, volunteering at Christmas events and brought joy to children, especially those in hospitals or facing hardships. His humility, work ethic, and dedication to helping others have set a powerful example for all who knew him. Bert is not only a man of action, but also of deep conviction, and his influence will be felt for generations to come. I would like to invite the voice of San Jose, Angela Torado, who's here and was a very close, personal friend of Bert's, to share a few words. Angela?
You could always count on Bert to help, as Santa answering last-minute Santa calls for the kids that were suffering a loss or empty because their parents had been killed during Christmas. Also, my national anthem duet singer. He was a comedian that would brighten your day, a sandwich maker at Ash Callower's house for the unhoused citizens, and a voice of wisdom. He's gone in body, but his love, patience, understanding, kindness, and integrity lives on through us. My last outing with Bert was at the Veterans Parade. It was pouring down cats and dogs, but he told me he was so happy to be my VIP veteran onstage, and he got to celebrate with everyone. Bert's smile definitely brought out sunshine in everyone's heart and soul. Bert, we love you, and you'll definitely be missed. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Next, we move to the closed session report. Is there any action taken in closed session that you need to report?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. There is not a report out of closed session today. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar is something that we approve in one big motion, but we will take public comments. Does any council first wish to pull any items from consent? Seeing no hands raised, then we will proceed to public comment.
Okay, I have 19 cards now of public speakers. I'm going to call the names. You can come down in any order, you don't have to come in the order you were called. Just come down to the microphone. Your timer is both on the podium and above you. Miranda Collett, Drewzy Kay, Greg Miller, and Hector Hernandez. Also, first person to the mic, go ahead and speak, and we have the front row reserved for the people who've been called and are waiting their turn.
Before you begin, and I know we have a lot of speakers on this one particular subject, if we could be respectful of everybody's comments, and please, no applause. If you want, if you must, use jazz hands, to be quiet or even as snaps, but we need to move through the agenda quickly, but we also want to be respectful and hear, hear what you have to say.
My name is Miranda Collett. I've seen that people are feeling disconcerted, disconnected, confused, overwhelmed, and depressed in these days. The only healthy way forward is to move in the direction in which we want to go. One step in the right direction is for San Jose to divest from all corporations dealing with Israel. All wars are horrifying beyond words, and the war against Palestine is one more tragic Let's be brave and live according to our values. Please, council people, divest from Caterpillar, Alphabet, and Microsoft. You have more than $50 million invested in these companies. Please, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Greg Miller, and according to the City of San Jose's most recent quarterly investment report, over $50 million of our city funds are currently invested in corporations with direct ties to Israel's genocide against Palestine, including Caterpillar, Alphabet, and Microsoft. These corporations provide equipment and services which Israel uses to commit war crimes against Palestinian civilians. Divestment is an effective way to exert pressure on Israel until it complies with international law. I call upon you to divest our city funds from these corporations. We have, we have some other things that we could be investing in. I'm thinking of housing and other needs that are, that we really need to be more concerned about, and rather than just investing in destruction and murder in the Middle East, you know, this is, does not make sense. So I encourage you to vote to divest from the three corporations that were, I mentioned, Caterpillar, Alphabet, and Microsoft, as a, as a way of showing some kind of, you know, like morality about what we're doing, what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Tanya, Philip, and Mike Anib.
Good afternoon. My name is Drewzy. I'm with San Jose Against War. I'm here to speak about the city's investment policy, which is part of this consent calendar. According to the most recent quarterly investment report, over $50 million of our city funds are currently invested in corporations with direct ties to Israel's genocide against Palestine, including Caterpillar, Alphabet, and Microsoft. These corporations provide equipment and services which Israel uses to commit war crimes against Palestinian civilians. Divestment is an effective way to exert pressure on Israel until it complies with international law. I call upon you to divest our city funds from these corporations. I, along with over 1,500 other people, have signed a petition demanding that you divest all city funds from this genocide. Over 50 community organizations, nonprofits, and small businesses have endorsed the petition as well. It is clear that the diverse and multicultural communities of San Jose refuse to be complicit in genocide. I call on you to exercise your leadership and stand with your constituents by divesting all city funds from Israel's genocide against Palestine.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi there. My name is Mike Anib. As we witness the devastating impact of Israel's war on the Palestinians, we ask our city government to make an ethical and practical statement. Within the last 467 days, Israel's military campaign has killed approximately 50,000 people in Gaza and the West Bank, with women and children comprising 70% of the casualties. This number is likely to be much higher once those missing or buried under the rubble are finally counted. International bodies, including the ICJ, Human Rights Watch, and other UN experts, have highlighted evidence of what they call a potential genocide. You and I know what we're seeing every day is, in fact, a genocide. Israel's actions extend beyond Gaza. Israel's actions extend beyond Gaza with increased settler violence in the West Bank and East Jerusalem, alongside verified reports of detainee mistreatment, including rape and murder in detention facilities. These ongoing war crimes continue primarily due to the support from U.S. corporations and government military aid. We simply ask that San Jose not contribute to people's suffering. San Jose currently invests in companies directly linked to Israeli apartheid. You've heard the three that we're asking to divest from. The reason is that Caterpillar uses militarized construction equipment, built by Caterpillar, Israel does, to destroy Palestinian homes, to tear up infrastructure, and build illegal settlements. We're asking to divest from Alphabet and Microsoft because their software services support Israeli military operations, including AI-powered military checkpoints and automated targeting systems. We respectfully ask you to withdraw investments from companies that enable the Palestinian oppression. Divestment would apply meaningful pressure on Israel to comply with international law. Several Bay Area cities have already divested, and we're asking you to join them.
Thank you. That's your time?
That's enough. Thank you.
I'd also like to call down, while the next person comes up, I'd like to call down Serena, Brian Darby, and Joan Simon.
Hi, my name is Hector Hernandez. So as you can see, I, along with many people from San Jose diverse communities, have shown up today to defend, to save San Jose diverse from communities that have ties to Israel's apartheid and genocide against Palestinians, like they say, like Caterpillar, Alphabet, and Microsoft. We have the more urgency to take action and stand, to take action and stand firmly on the side of peace and justice. We ask you to introduce a divestment resolution and to pass the resolution when the city's investment portfolio comes up for your approval in March. We must show that San Jose stands against genocide and guarantee that our city will be recorded on the right side of history. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you, and thank you for letting us have two minutes. Appreciate it. I wrote an email to everybody. Thank you to the city clerk for some really good suggestions. I'm trying to condense the stuff on the consent calendar. One thing I'd like to remember, last week I was able to speak to somebody from Pacific Gas and Electric, and she was very helpful in helping me understand a few things. Fela's name came up. I wasn't in the Zog fire, but I have been in a fire. I brought that up, and I bring it up again. I don't wish burning on anybody. I remember the debriding of my skin. I remember the doctors talking to my parents if I was going to live or not, and being the way I am, I didn't go into shock. That was some back in 1966. The reason I keep bringing it up is I don't wish that on anybody. I don't wish that on children. I don't wish that on any nation. And our society better find a way to live, or it won't, and that's for the entire world. I don't get why this stuff is hard. I get why it's complicated from different countries and stuff, but it has to start with people not being on the consent calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Tanya, and I support divestment against genocide and pulling the funds from corporations that are supporting Israel.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call John D. Grace G. and Anziv Shaffer. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Serena Meiger. In 2020, the City of San Jose aligned with its constituents' values and chose to amend city council investment policy so that the city would make no new direct investments in entities that are directly in exploration, production, refining, or marketing of fossil fuels. Five years later, there have been no negative effects on the fund. The precedent has been set regarding letting justice and equity guide investment decisions. San Jose does not want blood on its hands. Yet, since the announcement of the ceasefire, Israel has killed over a hundred Palestinians in Gaza, wounded several more, and continued illegally, illegal military offensive in the West Bank. This week, Israel cut off electricity in the only water desalination plant in Gaza. Be consistent with our city's clear values by divesting our city funds from war profiteers complicit in genocide. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Philip, and I'm an alumni of San Jose State. I now work in San Jose, and I'm an SEIU 521 steward. According to the City of San Jose's most recent quarterly investment report, over fifty million dollars of our city funds are currently invested in corporations with direct ties to Israel's genocide against Palestine, including Caterpillar, Alphabet, and Microsoft. These corporations provide equipment and services which Israel uses to commit war crimes against Palestinian civilians. Divestment is an effective way to exert pressure on Israel until it complies with international law. Divestment has worked to stop apartheid in South Africa, and it will be, it will be effective now. So I call on you to divest our city funds from these corporations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you, council members. My name is Grace Gallardo, and I was born and raised in San Jose, and our city has a proud history of being a leading center in the struggle for justice and freedom for all people. I ask that you build upon our city's legacy by divesting all city funds from Israel's genocide against Palestine. Other Bay Area cities like Hayward and Richmond have already taken the courageous step of divesting. I urge you to demonstrate your leadership and moral fortitude by joining them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call Flower, Uriel, and Kimberly Coke. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Joan Simon. I am a Jewish-American citizen of San Jose and a member of the San Jose Peace and Justice Center. I am here to urge the San Jose City Council to evaluate the city's investment portfolio and remove investments that are unethical. For a year and a half, an Israeli genocide has been taking place in full view of the world, indiscriminately killing children, women, and the aged in Gaza, destroying hospitals and schools, and denying basic human needs like food and medicines. I am urging the San Jose City Council to take a principled stand against this ongoing genocide, to demonstrate moral leadership by ensuring that the City of San Jose's investments are not being used to support these atrocities. In particular, the City of San Jose has tens of millions of dollars invested in Caterpillar, Microsoft, and Alphabet, who provide Israel with military equipment and technology that facilitate this genocide. Although these investments represent only a small fraction of the city's investment portfolio, removing these investments would be a very important act of human decency that the people of San Jose expect. We, the people of San Jose, refuse to be complicit in Israel's genocide. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is John De Royan with Students for a Democratic Society at San Jose State. I'm a student at San Jose State, and I'm here calling on San Jose to push forward this divestment resolution. Now, San Jose is a diverse city, and the city council must recognize the community in its entirety. Palestinian residents are experiencing pain and suffering. They belong in our community. I urge you to introduce a divestment resolution and to pass the resolution when the city's investment portfolio comes up for your approval in March. And as we know, Palestinians and pro-Palestinian activists are facing persecution nationwide, such as Mahmoud Khalil, who was unlawfully detained and arrested by ICE. Trump is lashing out against Palestinians, and we need to show that San Jose stands against that, stands against genocide, and guarantee that we will be recorded on the right side of history and not with reactionaries like Trump. So please, support this divestment resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Anzu Shaffer, and I'm here to call for divestment from genocide. Although the city's investment policy has rigorous credit requirements for authorized investments and mandates the objectives for safety, liquidity, and yield, the city has also set a precedent for socially responsible investment from South Africa in 1985 from fossil fuels in 2020. The city's investment portfolio, valued at 2.7 billion, invests in a diversified pool of fixed-income securities and does invest directly in Israel's genocide against Palestine, with over fifty million invested in Caterpillar, Microsoft, and Alphabet. Eighteen percent of the city's portfolio is invested in corporate securities issued in the United States. Corporations sell goods and provide services worldwide, including Israel. However, Caterpillar, Microsoft, and Alphabet play a direct role in genocide, providing Israel with military and equipment and technology. Investment earnings are a significant revenue source for the city's budget, given the city's even greater, giving the city even greater responsibility to ensure that its investments are made ethically and represent the values of San Jose residents. A divestment request would not cause investment loss and deprive the city of investment opportunities in any significant way, given that these investments are only account for two percent of the city's portfolio. Why not divest? Is genocide the only way to remain profitable? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call Laura, Lisa Adakari, and LA Granados.
Good noon, everybody. My name is Flower. I am a community activist and organizer. The millions and millions of dollars that are being directed towards genocide could be pumped back into our community to give our teachers a raise to build shelters for the homeless, when Mayor Matt Mahan, who is conveniently not here, just recently pitched the idea of jailing homeless people when he himself has probably never spent a day in a homeless shelter. They are stinky, crowded, no privacy, and overrun with bad leadership. It is a horrendous experience as somebody who was born into a shelter and spent the first six years in a shelter. Those millions of dollars could be directly put back into our community, but instead they are being put into companies that are bombing children. Now, I have nothing but respect for the people behind me who continue to expend their breath speaking to the various brick walls up here, but I, however, have lost my patience, so allow me to explain something to you. No justice, no peace is not just a slogan or a chant. It is a warning. It is an explanation. Until you, you elected officials, start listening to "we, the people," the protests will not stop, the encampments will not stop, the disruptions will not stop. We will not stop. Over a year later, we are still here, and we do not stop until you stop. We, the people, demand change. We, the people, demand justice. This is not right for our generation to have to stand here and watch genocide play out on our screens every single morning when we wake up. I am not Palestinian. I am not Muslim, and yet my heart breaks for the people who are being directly impacted by this. Every one of us in San Jose is a part of an intertwining community, and we see what is happening as genocide. The fact that this council is still allowing for money to be pumped into Israel after their crimes have been displayed on our screens every morning is nothing short of inhumane and atrocious. I beg you, please divest, or no justice, no peace.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, everyone. My name is Uriel Magdaleno. I am a community organizer with Silicon Valley Immigration Committee, and I am calling on San Jose to divest from war profiteers, Caterpillar, Alphabet, Microsoft. Investments which only amount to about two percent of San Jose's portfolio. Continuing to invest in these companies breaks public trust and corrodes the values of this city as a public service institution. The benefits of divestment far outweigh any risk or inconvenience associated with two percent divestment. What is preventing the city council from divesting from genocide? We should focus more on prioritizing what benefits our entire community. I want to commend the city council for recently passing a resolution to reaffirm the city's status as a sanctuary city. And, you know, with that, we also further funded the Santa Clara County Rapid Response Network. I want to see how we can prioritize what we want to invest in. We need to expand these types of services for our immigrant community. We need to prioritize expanding capacity of free legal services here for our immigrant community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Coke. I'm a lifelong resident of San Jose. I was born here. I was educated here, and I am here to call on San Jose to divest from more profiteers, Caterpillar, Alphabet, and Microsoft. You've heard many pleas and arguments for divesting from these companies, but I also want to call to your attention that Alameda County last December divested from Caterpillar Incorporated. Caterpillar Incorporated is a war profiteer which supplies bulldozers to Israel, which Israel uses to destroy houses, hospitals, universities, and it also uses to kill people in Gaza and the West Bank. I am calling upon San Jose to divest from these war profiteers and these investments which amount to only about two percent of their investment portfolio. There is no reason to continue funneling money into Israel and into death. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, city council. This is my first time being here and addressing you guys, so hello. I would like to talk to you about something that I, about something firsthand. I just returned from the West Bank, so I'm going to speak on a firsthand basis. While I was in the West Bank, I held the hand of a dear friend as he died from cancer, leaving behind a wife and four young children, the youngest four, the oldest eleven. Israel did not allow him into Jerusalem for life-saving treatment, life-saving cancer treatment, because that is what an occupying force does. They stop a father of four from being able to get cancer treatment. I held his hand two days before he died. Last week, I learned that the Israeli military shot into the car of another friend of mine. This was just last week, while she was driving with her two daughters. It is Ramadan right now. They shot her nine-year-old daughter in the head. I have pictures on my phone. They shot her nine-year-old daughter in the head. This is the military. She is still in the ICU. I have also, in my time in the West Bank, I have seen bulldozers, and I don't know, those things with the pick at the front, destroy homes and plow up roads, all through the towns of the West Bank, and then have roadblocks put up. These seal off the towns, isolating towns from their neighbors. A fifteen-minute drive can take two to four hours. People cannot get to their jobs, and they are out of work. My friends in the West Bank described this by holding their throats and saying, "They are choking us. We do not know what to do. Nobody cares." So I am asking for the city council to care.
Thank you. Next speaker. That's your time?
Hello, my name is LA, and I'm here from San Jose, and I was born and raised here. And as you see, there's many people that are here today that are, you know, have already asked you to divest from companies with ties to Israeli apartheid and the occupation and genocide in the Palestine. We must stop supporting this violence, and we demand a divestment resolution that honors the dignity and humanity of Palestinians. Listening to the people who have shown up here today that are asking you to, you know, stop supporting this violence, listening to these demands and honoring them, and actually following through, is the bare minimum of your jobs. You can invest in the local economies and the people that cook your food here, that mow your lawns, that do the gardening for you, that are in this local economy here, putting this money towards something that honors prosperity, peace, justice, that doesn't poison the environment. We can be looking at doing something different in the world here, in our more local lands. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Next speaker. Before you begin, I'm going to call- Thank you. Next speaker. Before you begin, I'm going to call my last cards. I have Allegra Watson, Yomi, Estefania, Socorro, Sherat, and Vanessa. Go ahead.
My name is Laura. Only 2% of San Jose's investment portfolio is what we're asking for when we're talking about Caterpillar, Alphabet, Microsoft. 2%. Divestment is what we're asking for. Divestment from genocide is what we're asking for. Financial pressure against an apartheid state is what we are demanding. International law has been broken again and again and again by Israel. Your constituents are tired of seeing body after body fall, family after family destroyed. Today, the city celebrated STEAM programs. Today, the children are here in San Jose. Today, the children in Palestine are trying to have schools and learn and catch up under the rubble. And today, that's all I have written. I'm not prepared. And it's, I just find it so interesting how we can make money, how we can put profit over people in any situation and not care. Ignorance is bliss, but you are no longer ignorant. We are watching you. We are remembering you, your faces, and our children will do the same. History has shown us that apartheid will fall. History has shown us that racism will not win, that putting people over profit will never win. History has shown us here in our own country, which we still have a lot of work to do. Some people thought segregation would never fall. Look at us now. Some people thought, I have no words. Conscious.
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker.
Hello. My name is Allegra Watson, and I'm a constituent of District Nine in San Jose. I am calling on the city council members to divest the $50 million in San Jose's portfolio from corporations directly supporting the ongoing genocide in Palestine. Caterpillar has sold bulldozers, highly armored bulldozers, that they knew the Israeli government and Israeli Defense Forces would use to demolish Palestinian homes. Caterpillar has a longstanding history of war profiteering with Israel since 1967, when the IDF started their practice of using bulldozers to destroy Palestinian homes, including violently killing civilians in their homes in the middle of the night and murdering U.S. activists who have stepped in as peacekeepers to protect Palestinian civilians from Israeli violence. San Jose is the center of Silicon Valley, and the tech industry is increasingly involved in war profiteering in this decade. Tech corporations like Microsoft and Alphabet have directly supported the IDF with cloud services and AI programs to commit war crimes in Gaza, helping Israel kill thousands of people in drone strikes and AI targeting of civilian homes in Gaza and the West Bank. Most recently, San Jose has a moral standard to uphold and divest from corporations who knowingly support Israel's genocide. San Jose has divested from apartheid in South Africa in 1985 and further, and from further investing in fossil fuels in 2020, and it has not had a negative impact to its portfolio. This would be almost purely symbolic, but it would make a difference on the world scale to encourage other cities as well to divest. Listen to your San Jose community and pass a divestment resolution in March. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Sherat Lin, and I ask you to vote in favor of the divestment resolution. I have been to the West Bank. I have been to Gaza. I have personally witnessed the demolition of Palestinian homes by Caterpillar bulldozers that are armored. And so I really, and also I've seen the checkpoints. I've gone through the checkpoints, and I've seen how the systems, the security systems that Google and Alphabet sell to Israel, how they control, how they have total knowledge of the movement of Palestinians throughout the territories, to an extent that is probably greater than what China does. Now, you may have questions about whether divestment is something that the city of San Jose will, you know, whether it's a sound investment policy. I am a director on the Board of Trustees of a private trust. About seven years ago, we had in our portfolio 1,000 shares of Boeing, a defense contractor. We did not divest from those shares immediately, but over a period of years, you know, hedging our risks, looking for opportunities to sell it off. And we did. I can say we successfully divested from Boeing, and I believe that San Jose can do that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. My name is Socorro Montaño. Y'all have seen me many, many times up here giving public comment for immigrant rights, for housing, and this is connected. I'm also the co-director at Latinos United for a New America. We work in District Three, Five, and Seven, and I'm here to urge you all to divest from companies who profit off of the genocide Israel is committing in Palestine. Did you know that Gaza is only three-fourths the size of San Jose? All of the destruction we've been seeing in a city in a strip that's so much smaller than San Jose. We here in San Jose take this Palestinian struggle seriously because we see the ways our lives are intricately tied. The weapons they are using to kill Palestinians are built here in the U.S., funded by our tax dollars, and we will not stand for this to continue. Now, San Jose and you all have a pattern of being on the right side of history, most recently affirming the resolution to stand with our immigrant community. San Jose also divested from companies profiting off of the South African apartheid. So this is not something new to San Jose. Israel's genocide against Palestine is far older than the current conflict, and it will not be resolved by the current ceasefire agreement. Since the announcement of the ceasefire agreement, Israel has killed over 100 Palestinians in Gaza, wounded several hundred more, and continued illegal military offensive in the West Bank, killing a two-year-old girl in her home on Saturday. Now, this feels real to all of us because we can only imagine if they were our neighbors. We want neighborhood safety in Palestine and for our neighbors here in San Jose. We must divest in order to exert pressure on Israel until it complies with international law and ends the genocide entirely. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. Whoops. Hello, everyone. My name is Estefania Bautista. I want to start off by saying that San Jose is a diverse city, and city council must recognize the community in its entirety. Palestinian residents are experiencing pain and suffering, not just from watching their families, but knowing the long history that Palestine has gone through. They belong in our community. I urge you to introduce a divestment resolution and to pass the resolution when the city's investment portfolio comes up to your approval in March. We must show that San Jose stands against genocide and guarantee that our city will be recorded on the right side of history. Divestment is possible. You just have to want it as much as we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi. My name is Yomi. I just want to say what a bizarre reality it is to live in where we have to have a, like, we have a city council meeting to politely discourse whether or not we should be handing money to fund the death of families, because it is that simple. Who are you representing? I'm in District Nine, by the way. Who are you representing when you invest in these corporations? Like, who are you representing? I will be taking note of who does and doesn't vote to divest from, from these corporations. And there are many reasons to divest from these corporations, including their labor practices, amongst others, that contributes to, like, as other people have said, to many of the issues that people here in San Jose face, whether it's job security, whether it's housing, and genocide is a pretty damn obvious one.
Next speaker.
Seeing no one coming to the microphone, I'm closing public comment and moving on to the consent calendar to vote. I do need to poll on consent 2.7. We'll vote on that after we vote on the other items. So I will entertain a motion on items 2.8 through items 2.16.
Am I able to ask a question?
Yes, certainly.
Sure. Great. I believe we have an individual named Maria here who manages these financial investments. Is that person in the room?
Maria Oberg, our finance director. She can come down.
Welcome. I think you're fairly new to the city. Okay, great. I wanted to ask, do we have any sort of guidelines on who the city invests with or who we contract with based on, like, their values? Anything in that order?
Yes and no. There is a social responsibility clause in the investment policy. So if everything is held equal, for example, if we value two investments, for example, that have the same generic terms and interest rates, we would look, you know, we'd favor buying a green bond, for example.
Oh, okay. So it's depending on who is available to do that contract service or investment, and it's between those individuals?
Correct.
Okay. Could I ask you, through the city manager, to investigate any sort of concerns with who we potentially could be investing in in preparation for this vote?
We will be happy to take that back to council. It's a council policy, so we will be happy to look into these and bring it back to you.
Great, yeah, because I spoke to this city lawyer, and she said that it's not agendized for any specific conversation. So we'd have to have a formal conversation in the future. So just to explain that. But thank you for people for coming. I think it's timely to have this conversation, not just this issue. There's a lot of things corporations are doing right now that are impacting our community. For example, there, a lot of these companies are investing in, you know, measures to come after our immigrant population in the East Side. And so I think a conversation is warranted. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Kamay.
Thank you so much. What is before us is not a resolution for divestment or anything like that, but I just wanted to ask, in terms of the companies that have come up, would they fall under the corporate notes?
Yes, they do. They are corporate medium-term notes.
Okay. Yeah, I think, not for today, but because it's not agendized, but I think that a conversation of how others have done it, as well as, someone mentioned the fact that over time, things can be done because these do cause impacts to our bottom line. And I, I think that the gentleman who mentioned his experience of doing things over time might be a pathway. So I think that when that comes back to us, it might be something that we could also take a look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands, is there a motion on those consent items, 2.8 through 2.16?
We need to include 2.1.
No, I'm, 2.7 is polled.
Yes, but 2.2, I mean, the adoption of ordinances needs to be included in the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. 2.2 through 2.62. Mine is 16 minus 2.7.
I'll move consent calendar without 2.7.
That's clear. Thank you. Thank you. All, can we vote? Or you want a voice vote?
We've got, we've got it working.
Okay.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you. That motion carries, and I polled 2.7 because I need to recuse myself, and I believe Councilmember Solis, you have the same. So we will be back.
Are there any other council members who need to recuse themselves on item 2.7? Anyone have Apple stock? Okay. Is there a motion to accept 2.0? Is there, I guess we've already done that. Is there a motion to, thank you. There's a motion to accept with two recusals. Tony?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We were listening to it backstage. Thank you. Moving on, we are, will be visiting land use consent items after, now, so do we have any public comments on land use?
Yes, Brian Darby.
Okay. Why don't we have the public comment on land use, and then we will, I'll entertain a motion on the land use consent items.
First of all, I'm impressed with your ability to recuse yourselves, go out and come back in. Maybe you could go to Washington and explain that to them. Just on the land use, I wanted to say that the effort that's put into all of that, I really appreciate the city staff because there's a lot of work that goes into it. I never really realized until I tried to read all of it. And on that, I'd like to thank, I can't believe I'm saying this, but I'm going to say it, to the developer community because they, we wouldn't have a city if they weren't in it, too. We don't always agree, but they deserve a thanks, too. Thank you.
Back to council.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the consent?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now take a recess from the regular agenda, not physically. We're still sitting right here, and we move on to the joint meeting agenda, which is the proposed revisions to City Council Policy 1-15, debt management policy. There's a five-minute presentation, and Maria Oberg is here, and welcome. This is your first time in the box, I think.
It is. All right, let's see. So while we wait for the presentation, honorable vice mayor, members of the council and staff, I am Maria Oberg. I am the Director of Finance.
Maria, could you move closer to the microphone, please?
I'll try.
Thank you.
And with me today, I have Chan Yu Sun, who is the Deputy Director of Finance overseeing debt and treasury in our department. So the item before you is proposed revisions to Council Policy 1-15, which is the debt management policy. A quick background, this debt management policy sets forth certain debt management objectives and establishes parameters for issuing and administering debt. It was last revised in March 2023, and the proposed policy changes must be approved by city council, City of San Jose Financing Authority Board, and the Successory Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Board. A quick background for this, the reason for the proposed revisions is that last year in October, city council approved documents in connection with the issuance of California Community Choice Financing Authority Clean Energy Project Revenue Bond Series 2025E. These bonds were successfully closed on November 4th, 2024, in the amount of $1.24 billion. They provided over 12% savings annually, which in dollar terms means a total savings of over $66 million during the first eight-year term of the bonds. And because we expect to have more transactions like these in the future, it is prudent to establish general guidelines and a consistent process for any future issuance. So the section that we're proposing adding to the policy for energy prepayment agreements establishes the following. The city assigns certain rights and obligations under power purchase agreements to a prepaid counterparty. The conduit issuer, like the CCCFA, issues taxes and bonds and applies those bond proceeds towards the prepayment and delivers prepaid energy to the city at a discount. Bonds may be issued up to a 30-year term. They are subject to mandatory tender at the end of the initial term, which can be seven to 10 years from the initial bond issuance. We establish a minimum 5% annual savings during the initial term. Energy prepaid bonds are special limited obligations of con- conduit issuer. They're payable solely from the trust estate related to the bonds, and investors of the bonds have no recourse to the city. So with that, we recommend, one, that you accept the report and approve the proposed revisions to the Council Policy 1-15 City of San Jose Debt Management Policy. And two, adopt the amended policy by resolution of the City Council, the City of San Jose Financing Authority Board, and the Successor Agency Board. And with that, that ends our presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Before we proceed into public comment, I need to make it clear as to what we were actually doing, because I didn't announce that clearly, both to myself and to my colleagues, that we are operating as the Financing Authority of the Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency of the City of San Jose. So we had to adjourn the City Council. We convene as the successor agency. We will have this hearing. After the hearing, we will vote as the, as City Council and then move on. Is that pretty much right? More or less?
That's correct. You're hearing, you didn't adjourn the City Council meeting, but you recessed into a meeting with the Joint City Council, the Financing Authority, and the Redevelopment Successor Agency.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
We have no cards.
With all that and no public comment. Okay. Do we, do we have any public comment here from the City Council? Okay, now I believe we adjourn this, the, we vote. We vote. Okay.
Do you need a motion?
Then we need a motion.
Motion to accept the report and approve the proposed revision to the City Council policy and adopt the amended policy by resolution of the City Council.
Okay. Seeing no hands raised, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Sorry to convene. Now I, now I reconvene the San Jose City Council. How about that? And we move to the report of the city manager.
Wonderful. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm happy to share that the city, along with the community, celebrated the opening of the brand-new Almaden Lake Park All-Inclusive Playground on March 8th, just in time for Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in March. This is the fourth all-inclusive playground in San Jose, joining Emma Prouse Farm Park, Rotary Play Garden, and Lincoln Glen Park. This beautiful playground and the others before it demonstrate our unwavering commitment to our foundational strategic support focus area of racial and social equity. Creating spaces like this helps eliminate disparities and fosters inclusive communities. The new half-acre playground at Almaden Lake Park features music and play structures, quiet spaces, restroom accessibility improvements, and many other features that help make play accessible to everyone in our community. We hope you all can visit the new all-inclusive playground or one of the others with your family and friends soon. I'd like to thank the Departments of Public Works and Parks Recreation and Neighborhood Services, along with the County of Santa Clara, who provided more than $670,000 to help build the park. A special thank you to the Almaden Rotary Club, who assisted with the fundraising efforts as well. What an exciting addition to District 10 in Councilmember Casey's first few months and a true gem for the entire city to enjoy. Thank you very much.
That's exciting. Hope to have an adaptive playground in my district at some point. That's wonderful. Moving on to item 4.1, Amendment to Charter 10.10 Pedestrian Facilitation Ordinance. We have a five-minute presentation from Deputy Chief Gina Tabalde. Welcome.
Good afternoon. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Gina Tabalde. I am the Deputy Chief of the Executive Office for the San Jose Police Department. Today, I will be speaking about the pedestrian facilitation ordinance of the municipal code. The department is proposing changing the hours from 10:00 a.m. to midnight to adding two hours to it and making it 8:00 a.m. to midnight. This change is being recommended to coincide with the opening of businesses and foot traffic downtown associated to work, schools, and businesses. So the pedestrian facilitation zone ordinance, which falls under 1010 of the municipal code, first became effective in 1997. Section 1010-010 states, "No person shall sit or lie down on a public sidewalk or upon a blanket chair, stool, or any other object placed upon a public sidewalk in the pedestrian facilitation zone during the hours between 10:00 a.m. and 12:00 a.m. midnight." There are exceptions under 1010-030 for medical emergencies, wheelchairs, people with permits, et cetera. So, and as stated earlier, we are seeking to move it two hours earlier and start at 8:00 a.m. So here up on the map, you can see the PED zone. On the west side is 87, the south side is 280, the east side is Fourth Street, and the north side of it is Julian. And then on Santa Clara Street, it does extend from Fourth to 10th on both sides of the sidewalk. So under Section 1010-040, the San Jose Police Department can cite under two instances. The first is if we come into contact with someone who is violating the ordinance, and we have within 30 days previously warned them for violating the ordinance, we can cite, we can issue a citation. Or if they are within 300 feet of one of the posted signs downtown, we can issue a citation on first contact. They don't have to have a prior violation in order for us to cite. So when I became the captain of the Central Division in July of 2023, the downtown area was struggling with open drug markets. Neighbors and businesses advised me, as well as the media, that people were congregating and sitting on public sidewalks for the purpose of selling and using narcotics openly. Our, one neighbor was quoted by a local news station stating that people were partying, doing drugs, urinating, and defecating. This was happening at multiple locations all throughout the day. And to prevent the congregation and these illegal activities from occurring, San Jose PD began enforcing the ordinance again and issuing citations. And what we found by issuing these citations is that the open-air drug usage and sales was reduced per residents, business employees, and even city hall employees. They had seen, or they have seen, less of the open-air drug use and sales, and they feel safer downtown. As the captain, I often drove around to the hotspots. And after we started enforcing the ordinance, the activity was reduced. It was effective. Those, when we keep those who are committing the illegal activities moving along, it tends to minimize the illegal activity, whereas if they're stagnant and they start conducting it. So while the original, the ordinance's original intent was to make it safer for city residents to walk on downtown sidewalks, the current start time of 10:00 a.m. does not fully align with the realities of morning foot traffic, the opening of businesses, and the start of work and school. Many people who work in the downtown businesses walk to work from their homes or from nearby transit stations and off-site parking lots. Students commuting or walking to downtown schools use the sidewalks in the early morning hours. The fact that most businesses open and school starts around 8:00 a.m. makes the current 10:00 a.m. enforcement start time less impactful, as sidewalks are already in heavy use by that time. I drove this morning. I specifically got to downtown at 8:00 a.m., and there were people all over the sidewalks, walking and using the sidewalks. So adjusting the hours will better support a safe and accessible pedestrian experience during these critical morning hours, as well as help business employees feel safer when they arrive at work and open for customers, and help students and parents feel safer while walking to school. And that is it.
Thank you for that presentation. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, Alex Stidinski.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and members of City Council. On behalf of the San Jose Downtown Association, I want to emphasize the importance of maintaining a safe, welcoming, and accessible downtown for everyone. Residents, businesses, workers, and visitors alike, and expanding the pedestrian facilitation ordinance from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. reflects ongoing concerns from our downtown community about sidewalk accessibility, public safety, and economic recovery. However, enforcement alone is not the solution. Any changes to this ordinance must be paired with increased outreach, services, and shelter options for those in need. We must ensure that downtown remains a place where businesses can thrive, visitors feel comfortable, and our most vulnerable residents receive the support they deserve. SJDA remains committed to working with the city, with service providers, and law enforcement to strike a balance between maintaining a vibrant, maintaining vibrant public spaces and ensuring compassionate, effective solutions. We urge council to consider both enforcement and support strategies as you deliberate on this amendment. Thank you.
Back to council.
Thank you. Councilmember Dwan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you Deputy Chief Tabalde for the report there. Story Roads in my district to include, you know, the Tropicana and Vietnam Town. And we would be greatly benefit from ordinance like this. And since I'm advocating for Tropicana and Grand Century Mall, they struggle with these issues, very similar to downtown. The first question is, what can we do to expand this outside of downtown? And the second question is, are there considerations by staff to mitigate the migration to other neighborhoods, especially District 5 and District 7 as well?
Okay, as far as expanding, you know, that's above and beyond my scope. If you tell us we're expanding, then I mean, we're expanding. But as of now, focusing on the downtown one, that's what I have the information to answer. It is effective downtown. So if an ordinance is written, and council votes on it, and you choose to do one over in Story Road, then, you know, there are considerations. Downtown does have additional services. We have walking beat officers that are able to enforce it. So, you know, there are considerations when you, you look into other areas.
Thank you. I think this question probably go toward the city manager office.
Yeah, so it's definitely something that we could look at. And I would ask the city attorney, I mean, obviously, we have a very specific ordinance and something in our municipal code for around downtown. For, so for us to expand that into other areas, that would be some work that the city would need to do. I would like to say, I think, two things. As the deputy chief mentioned, downtown's kind of uniquely situated because of the additional policing resources to implement such a program. And that's where it was really successful, is we go back to, you know, we've talked about it in the council focus areas, really the implementation under Gina's leadership, as well as the dorm of San Jose State opening in the middle of downtown, kind of changed the downtown ground floor experience post-COVID considerably with a lot more people out. So, you know, we've been successful. I would say that the other thing that Gina and her team did, as well as enforcing it, is making connections with those people, whether they needed county services, nonprofit services. So the way we went about implementing that wasn't just moving people around, but actually trying to connect them to a like service, so they weren't doing it again the same exact morning, and hopefully reducing impacts on surrounding areas. Then lastly, I would say, is, is part of our work overall in small business, especially those business improvement districts, we really do at a staff level, look at lessons learned and how we can apply those to, whether it's your business improvement district, like Tully Road, Willow Glen, if these are everything. So it is, it is something at a staff level that we look at. But of course, if the council so wishes for us to look at that, think, you know, through the rules process or whatever, we could look about expanding that citywide or to other locations. But kind of enforcement or implementation would be somewhat challenging, given the resources in PD right now.
I think it's important that we, we slowly expand the program. I'm not asking that we're doing all at one shot. And I think when we do a municipal code, it's applied to the city as a whole. It's allow our PD another tool to reduce that blight, that garbage, the, you know, and biohazard and hazardous material, especially in, you know, the underserved district, like 57. And I drive down there every single day, and I see people just like downtown, laying and squatting everywhere and, you know, defecate and urinate. And I think we, we as a city as a whole, it's just, yes, I understand that, that we want to change some of the downtown. But I think we should make the policies to apply throughout the city and allow our citizen and our businesses, not just downtown, as a whole, to benefit from this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kamay.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair. I really want to thank you so much for this. This demonstrates that with consistency and enforcement and, you know, just sort of being out there, providing whatever help or services, doing those connections, as, as Lee mentioned, really does work. And I think that to Councilmember Dwan's point, there are many, many, I mean, I think we all have situations that are very, very similar to what is experienced in the downtown area. I'm glad that what you found is that it works. But I also think that we know that enforcement works. It's just a matter of having the capacity to be able to really spread it across the entire city. So I'm hopeful that we can take that model and perhaps think about what is the best bang for our limited dollars to be able to work in, you know, sort of the hotspot areas. Because I think that, that for a long time, we didn't enforce, there were other things that were happening with COVID and all of that. But I think that the time has come to prioritize enforcement and really looking at perhaps, what is the pathway to do some of this over time? Because we all experience it in our districts. And so I'd like to see that in the future. I would like to move staff's recommendation to approve the ordinance amending Chapter 10.10 of Title 10 of the San Jose Municipal Code. And again, thank you so much for your work.
Thank you. We have a first and second. Councilmember Salas.
First of all, I wanted to thank you Deputy Chief Tabalde for all you do, for all SJPD does. I just, I can't thank you enough for what you have to do in this city. I know you're stretched all the time. I have comments specific to my downtown district, but I want to build on what Councilman Dwan was suggesting to staff. I'm just wondering, if you wait until we get our 1,400 police, we don't, then, and then it's going to take a year to pass the ordinance. I know as a business owner in my district, which is not in this smaller part, but I know that when it's posted, I am able to at least bring it up to people who are standing there without being in danger, and they listen. So I would encourage staff to really look into extending this to other parts of the city, particularly the ones that we all know where they are. Now, specific to my, oh, the other question I have for staff is, why didn't we do it at 7:00 a.m. instead of 8:00 a.m.? You must have considered that.
Okay, so the reason we came up with an 8:00 a.m. start is because that's when the downtown walking beat officers start. They start at 8:00 a.m. And they're really the ones, while our patrol officers are out responding to calls for service and going call to call, they're the ones that have time to proactively, you know, issue citations for the violations. So that's why we chose 8:00 a.m. as a start time.
Great. And then one last question. Social support, do you have social support when you are there? Because it is going to, it's getting to be more and more valuable that you can engage and say, and we have this place you can go to. I know the 988 number is actually starting to work. I tested it the other day. But I'm just wondering if you actually have access to social support when you come across someone like that who has to move, and yet you could also offer them social support.
So we work with all of our downtown stakeholders. We do have supportive resources in the downtown So we work with all of our downtown stakeholders. We do have supportive resources in the downtown. You have, you know, agencies like PATH. We work with Groundworks and the Social Impact Team all the time, and they come over and they can provide services. So we collaborate while we're doing the enforcement so that we have enforcement and support.
Thank you, Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And thank you Deputy Chief Tabaldi for your presentation on this very important issue. I am sure that my colleagues and I all agree that we want to make downtown a safe and welcoming place that's going to bring in dollars to our local businesses, that's going to make our residents and our visitors feel safe and secure. And we're all sharing that common goal. I also believe that ongoing investments in the infrastructure that's going to make walking, biking, riding public transit, and visiting our local businesses feel safe and inviting is going to play a huge role into how our city is successful in 2026 and beyond. And so through these investments that we're making as a city, we can ensure that all of our residents of all ages and all abilities are going to be well-connected into coming into our downtown to access those local businesses, our parks, our housing, our schools. And so after hearing your presentation, I was just curious about how the change in the ordinance, the timing was led. Was it data-driven? Was it narrative-driven? Or was there another way that this came about?
It was driven, I would say narrative-driven. It was community members contacting us in the early morning hours when they're going to open their business, and someone's laying out in front of it, and they're afraid to tell them to move. They don't want retaliation. So they would call us, and we'd be like, okay, are they violating this crime? No. Are they violating this crime? No. Are they violating, you know? So it just gives us probable cause to contact them and, you know, to help move them along for the business owners who are opening up for their safety. Also, elected officials who had received complaints from community members, businesses, et cetera. And they approached us, and we discussed it at the downtown stakeholder meeting with, you know, the mayor, D3, city manager's office, PRNS. We had all the stakeholders at the table, and we discussed the timing. And we felt that because of the walking beat's ability to actually do something, starting at 8:00 and start enforcing, that that would be a logical start time.
And I would just jump in. I mean, at the time of implementing this, Deputy Chief Tabaldi was the downtown captain, so she was really in the middle of it all. So I'm sure the narrative was hot and fast. I would say, though, data did back up an awful lot of this. As we were doing the surveys around the focus areas, in addition to just how people feel, we were getting anecdotal information from those surveys. And this was a huge factor in how residents felt about the safety of downtown. At the same point in time, we did see quality-of-life crimes, specifically in District Edward, which was, you know, predominantly the downtown, go-ahead increase versus some of the violent crimes. So we did see, you know, a fear of our community, as well as some of those quality-of-life crimes, increasing because of that population.
Thank you for that information. And I really appreciate the proactive approach in connecting folks who need supportive services, connection to shelter, that that's been part of those interactions. We also heard from Mr. Satinsky about the interest in having this ordinance paired with those supportive services. And I'm curious to my colleague, the maker of the motion, if there is a possibility to include a friendly amendment that would pair this ordinance with support funding downtown streets teams, or ensuring a way for the citations to have that connection to shelter, a connection to supportive services?
So I think, I think that since we're right, sort of in the middle of budget, that would be a great way to kind of like put it in through the budget process. I don't know that, you know, today we need to do that, because right now, we're just amending the timeframe in which, for the hours. So I would, I would suggest it might go through the budget process. I don't know what other colleagues may think, but...
I think that's appropriate, is to wait for the budget process. The mayor's March message will be introduced next week, and then we'll start discussing the budget at that point. And that's a time to discuss something like that and bring it in, because there's offsetting expenses that we may have to look at to expand. Not to say it's right or wrong, but it should be included in with the budget process.
I appreciate that feedback. And again, just want to convey my interest in, you know, this ordinance that supports our business owners, and also the solutions that are going to drive the change, that is going to be sustainable, impactful, long-lasting in our community. And so I hope to see that be part of this ordinance, and glad to see that it's already happening. I'd just love to see that solidified. Thank you. Thanks.
Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you. I want to thank Councilmember Campos for the thoughtful questions and comments. And, you know, often I find that we are reacting to homelessness in a narrative-driven way. So I appreciated that framing. And just want to, I wasn't going to comment on this item, except that I was kind of listening to the conversation. And I just want to give the same caution that I seem to give regularly at these conversations. We all would like to say, there should be business areas in our districts that are free of homelessness. But this has to be done in a holistic, responsible way. If we say that all business districts are, if we're saying that all business districts are going to be clear of unhoused, and we don't yet have a place for everyone to go, we're driving them more and more into our neighborhoods, along our creeks, and into our parks, which is exactly what we're also trying to deal with at this point. And so while we'd like to move quickly, we'd like to move faster, we have to move smarter. And we, this is the year in which we're bringing a lot of services online. We're hoping to see an impact and see a difference. But I caution us in trying to replicate things across the city that are going to build, create more problems than they solve. So while we've made this decision to do this policy downtown in order to bring some vibrancy back to our downtown core, we ought to be really thoughtful and careful about walking towards this criminalization of homelessness that will not solve the problem, but only cause us to chase people around from area to area, because we'd like every area to eventually be free of homelessness. So I just wanted to bring that up, because I keep hearing that sort of underlying, underpinning, why not my neighborhood? Why not my business district? Why not my community? We're not at that point yet. I hope we will be at some point where we can, where we can do that. But I just want us to be thoughtful and careful going down this path. And I know we're going to be having this conversation. It seems like every other week, we have the same conversation. We're all frustrated, but we have to be, we have to be smart about what we implement, and where, and when. So I just wanted to weigh in on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Dwan.
Thank you. I just got a couple more questions. Is the funding come from PBIT?
So the majority of the downtown walking beat money is from PBIT. All captains at San Jose PD have a certain amount of money for walking beats. So although other districts don't necessarily have this ordinance, you do have walking beats, and you can work with your captains and tell them the issues, when and where they're occurring, and they can deploy the walking beats or the extra two-person cars to those areas to problem solve. They're problem-solving calls, or cars. So you do have that, you know, at your disposal. But the majority of the money for downtown, that's funding the walking beats, yes, it is PBIT.
And Councilmember Dwan, I would just say too, and PD can pass it along, but in the case of the area you're talking about, a lot more is actually private property, as opposed to public property. So the existing resources out there actually have tools without the pedestrian facilitation zone. So maybe it's something we can pass along to the Western Division Commander.
No, I appreciate that. According to the Section 10.10.010, it's already there to apply from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. Now, that's applied throughout the city. Am I correct?
No, 10.10 is specific to the pedestrian facilitation ordinance. It's 10.10 of the municipal code. It goes from 10.10 to 10.040. It's specific to the area, let me bring up the map for you. Oh, I don't have my PowerPoint up there. But it was specific to that map that I showed, the 280, the 87, the Julian, the Fourth, and then along Santa Clara from Fourth to 10th.
Thank you. I see that. And one last question. You haven't answered the question, is there consideration by staff to mitigate the migration when we apply this, you know, toward downtown?
So as far as the migration and that being an unintended consequence, we really didn't experience much of that downtown. So, I mean, generally, if criminal activity occurs outside of the zone, you know, we contact the individual based on a crime being committed, and we can enforce criminal law. But, you know, in the zone, that's just one added tool in our toolbox. But we really didn't experience it. The zone is actually so large that once we kind of sent them along, they would disperse, and that was it.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other hands, thank you Deputy Chief Tabaldi for bringing this to us. And I think changing from 10:00 to midnight, making it 8:00 a.m. to midnight makes perfect sense. I've seen the patrol officers out there, and it's good to see them, and it builds a sense of security and safety for those in the community, and particularly our small businesses who are really impacted by it. So thank you. With that, let's vote. Okay, we have reached the final item, Item 5.1, Approval of Proposal Rankings and Authorization to Negotiate and Execute Concession Agreements for the San Jose-Manetta International Airport. And I believe we have Mookie Patel in the box. Welcome.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmembers, I also have with me today, oh, I'm Mookie Patel, Director of Aviation for the airport. And with me, I have Rebecca Bray. She's our principal property manager, who's in charge of all of our leasing activities at the airport. Today, we have a brief presentation for you, I got the connector right here, a brief presentation that will go over the selection of two top-ranked concession proposals. They're broken out into Package One and Package Two, that resulted from an RFP, or Request for Proposal, that started back in August. This RFP consisted of 12 locations across Terminals A and B, and offers a diverse mix of specialty retail, cafes, travel essentials, and products. The first slide, I think we're missing one slide. There we go. The first slide basically highlights the goals of the RFP. At the onset of this RFP process, our goal was to seek out highly-experienced retail operators that had exceptional customer experience, proven customer experience, offered a wide variety of top-quality products and convenience experiences. We also wanted to incorporate technology into this retail concession RFP, and then be very distinctive to collect the experiences of Silicon Valley and San Jose into the program and bring that into the airport. And of course, the final goal was to optimize our retail revenue for the airport. The program, I won't spend a lot of time on this one, but we spent a lot of time doing extensive outreach. And Rebecca spent many, many hours on the phone, doing evening events, and traveling to different industry conferences to do the outreach for businesses locally and nationally that wanted to participate in our program. So with the scoring system, our Package One, with the highest combined score, was proposed to be awarded to Hudson. Hudson brings with them a, what we call ACDBE, which is the Airport Concession Disadvantaged Business Enterprise. So it's our minority and small business participation goal. That goal, their participation will be at 15% in their program. They also have a capital investment in Package One of about $7.2 million to build out these stores. The minimum annual guarantee, the MAG, is estimated to be just shy of $2.1 million. And then just a little fundamentals on the breakdown of these proposals. There's a minimum guarantee, and then they also guarantee percentage rent. So the percentage rent on all products would be at 21%, and a deduction of 3% for locally-made products, so that they have the opportunity to bring in small businesses that have a higher cost of supply chain, and bringing them in at a fair price. So I'll turn over the presentation to Rebecca to go through the remaining slides for Package One.
Thank you. So our first location is Sonoma Life. This location is influenced by the vineyards of Northern California. It will feature, let's go back, there you go. It will feature wines from Napa and Sonoma, and locally from Santa Cruz and Morgan Hill. One unique feature of this location is that passengers will be able to customize a gourmet gift basket and ship it to anywhere in the world. Our next location is Willow Glen Market. It is a travel essential store that is visually inspired by Willow Glen's colorful storefronts and iconic signs. The Hudson store has travel essentials, which is located near our international gates, and sofa provisions, which will be located in baggage claim. This location will feature San Jose's Nirvana Soul Coffee, and includes last-minute must-have travel essentials. In Terminal B, we have Santana and Olsen, which is a hybrid convenience and specialty concept, which takes its inspiration from Santana Row. One thing that's really unique in this RFP is that we created this concept of a store within a store. And this is a perfect example of that. For example, within Santana and Olsen, it will feature a special children's interactive Lego corner that is designed to encourage exploration. Furthermore, for our techies, we will have a Google exploratory wall feature and merchandise that is currently on, the merchandise is currently only available at the Mountain View campus. We like to highlight the fact that we are going to be the very first airport to sell Google merchandise. And then turning it back, and then we have one San Jose. This location will feature travel essentials.
So the packages, Package One and Package Two, both include six locations in each package, and they're a mix of stores within Terminal A and Terminal B. Package Two is being proposed to be awarded to Parity's Laguardia. Their Airport Concession Disadvantaged Business Enterprise participation is at 12%. Their capital investment is $9.6 million. The minimum annual guarantee for that contract was set at $2.7 million. And again, their percentage rent will be 19% on all products, and 16% on all locally-made products.
And our first concept is Plaza de San Jose, which it draws its inspiration from the Mayfair neighborhood, which is the home to Cesar Chavez. This hybrid store within a store, in addition to the travel essentials, will feature an Apple iStore for passengers' technology needs. And we're really excited about, in the right-hand quarter, I'm going to say this name, Smoothie, which is an automated smoothie machine, which is an opportunity to integrate technology into this location. The Goods at SJC is another hybrid concept that combines travel essentials with locally crafted goods at Hip and Humble. Within the Goods at SJC, it'll feature merchandise from national and local sports teams, including San Jose State, Stanford, Earthquakes, 49ers, and San Jose Sharks, to name a few. In addition to that, it will feature an automated manicure station. The Hip and Humble will feature locally sourced products and gifts, including a wide range of fashion accessories, bath-and-body products, jewelry, and home decor. And the SJC Exchange is a travel essential store that takes its design from the rich, diverse culture of San Jose. Seymour's Essentials, where a guest can find a wide range of travel necessities, all designed to make their journey smoother. And finally, located in the baggage claim, the Garden Marketplace, which is an open-air marketplace, which takes its inspiration from the historic Rose Garden neighborhood, and will feature a variety of last-minute items for passengers departing from the airport. As Mookie touched on, one of our goals is to encourage ACDBE participation. San Jose meets its ACDBE participation goal, utilizing 100% race-neutral participation, which means as part of this RFP, no contract goal, ACDBE goals were established, and bidders did not receive additional points for ACDBE. However, we're very pleased to see that our current name ACDBE participation, which sits at 9%, is going to increase to 13%. That is a projected increase of 47%. Currently, our program, our ACDBE retail program, we have one ACDBE partner and we're proud to say that we will be increasing that to five ACDBE partners. So let's meet them. For Parity's, we have Performance Excellence Partners, Skyview Concessions, and Pacific Business Partners. For Hudson, we have Cato Hospitality Group and Oak Landish. Another important goal of this RFP was we wanted to ensure that we supported our local community. We wanted to make sure that all prepackaged grab-and-go was freshly procured and so Hudson will be having all of their grab-and-go products coming from Italy. And Parity's, their products will be coming from Greenleaf, which definitely is a staple in San Jose. In addition to that, the all-unsold prepackaged food will be donated to Loaves and Fish's Family Kitchen of San Jose. In summary, we wanted to ensure that we represented our community. So both in our professional and local collegiate sports teams, our local tech companies, which will include Apple and Google, and we will have over 50 local businesses that have the opportunity to have their products within these stores. Just to quickly touch on that, these are some of the local programs, including Mike and Nikki's Honey and Nirvana Soul, and we have the Cap Smith and Idol Wide Floral. For those businesses that were not part of this original opportunity, we want to encourage, continue to diversify our program. So the airport will be hosting biannual outreach opportunities where businesses will have the opportunity to meet with these successful proposers and see if there's an opportunity to introduce their products into the airport.
So in closing, overall results of the program, 12 new concepts. It's a 12-year contract that generates a little over $47 million. Percentage rent averages $19.3 million over the entire program, $17 million worth of capital investment. It does integrate technology. It increases local participation with 50-plus businesses and we are growing our pie with sharing it with our small minority and women-owned businesses throughout the community. So with that, we'll take some questions.
Thank you for that presentation. I'm really excited to see so many local businesses highlighted there. That's really fabulous to see Greenleaf and others. You went through so quickly, I couldn't pull them all out in my head, but they were, many of them I've shopped from, I've purchased from, and I enjoy. And Nirvana Soul, having them as one of the coffee provider at the baggage claim is really wonderful. I'm so glad to see that these two packages include so many local businesses and that the look and feel of them pulls from the identity within San Jose and all the various San Jose communities. So thank you for that. I think that's really creative and I hope it's wildly successful in the airport. Let's move to public comment.
Sure, four cars, five cars. Michael, I can't read his last name, Michael with Hudson, Iris Messina, Angela, Angela, I can't read that last name, Nikki and Veronica? Come on down.
Good afternoon. Hello, Commissioner, sorry, council members. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak with you today. My name is Iris Messina. I'm the Vice President of Business Development for Hudson. Hudson has been a longstanding partner with the airport and we're honored to have the opportunity to extend and grow that relationship. Joined today by our joint venture partners, which are owners in the business, Michael Washington and Angela Say, they'll both be speaking later, as well as one of our brand partners is also here today, Nirvana Soul Coffee. On behalf of our joint venture, which is mouthful, HG SJC Retail Concessionaires LLC, I would like to collectively express our gratitude for this opportunity. And I'd also like to express our commitment to providing an opportunity for many local, small businesses to have an opportunity to be in the airport over the life cycle of our agreement. I'd also like to express our commitment to facilitate a smooth transition of the stores from us to Parity's Lagadere, as well as to deliver an effective and efficient construction project. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, esteemed council members, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Michael E. Washington, owner of Cato Hospitality Group. I've been fortunate to partner with Hudson for over 10 years. I'm grateful for this opportunity to expand such great company for the San Jose-Manetta International Airport. I'm also grateful to be the Western Regional Director for the Airport Minority Advisory Council, and I'm also on the Trade Board, affectionately known as AMAC. AMAC is committed to ensuring small business operators have opportunities to operate at the airport equal system. We're enthusiastic that the airport is committed to helping local small businesses, women ACDBE operators grow and gain experience by operating and presenting their products within the airport. Congratulations to the airport leadership team for a job well done. And again, thank you for this opportunity. Good work.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. I am Nikki Harlan. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Parity's Lagadere and I'm also a board member for the Airport Minority Advisory Council. I want to take just a few minutes to talk to you about our sincere excitement for this opportunity in the airport. We have been working very closely to make sure that we have crafted a wonderful program that will be an award-winning program and successful for all parties involved. I will also share with you that our proposal was designed to reflect San Jose and Silicon Valley's culture, innovation, and sense of place. As one of North America's leading concessionaires, Parity's Lagadere is successfully operating in more than 90 airports, including eight in California. Our extensive experience allows us to anticipate travelers' preferences and sometimes not, optimize operations, and create high-performing retail spaces that drive both customer satisfaction and revenue growth. I will say, especially here, we are also excited to bring cutting-edge technology to enhance passenger experience. Our stores will feature self-checkouts, real-time inventory control, and digital engagement opportunities for all passengers to provide a seamless experience. We will also implement AI-driven customer analytics to adapt to evolving traveler needs and consider this a bit of a lab for all that we want to explore in our fleet across North America. Through our ACDBE partnership with Skyview Concessions, Performance Excellence Partners, and Pacific Business Partners, we create impactful designs in an environment that will go well beyond anything that we have imagined. We also recognize the wonderful
That's your time?
Thank you.
Next speaker. I'd also like to call Sheridan, Rachel, and April.
Thank you for your time. My name is Veronica Macy. I am the CEO and co-founder of Nirvana Soul. First, I want to say thank you to you guys for even thinking of us. Being a small business, just diving so deep into bringing joy to people, which has always been our mission. We've always wanted to be in the airport life since we opened our first location. But I think just being able to possibly be a destination location and to see the other local business owners that work so hard to have that opportunity now, I think would just be such a good look for San Jose for sure. And so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. We're so honored to be here today. My name is Angela Tsai and I'm the CEO and Creative Director of Oak Landish. Our mission is to spread local love by way of our civic pride apparel and accessories while creating jobs and giving back to the people and places that maintain the Bay Area's spirit of innovation. Over the last 25 years, we have worked with hundreds of small, local, independent makers, muralists, artists, and community groups, as well as large entities like the Golden State Warriors and the Bay Area Host Committee. More importantly for this venture, we opened a brick-and-mortar store in San Jose 10 years ago as part of the City and San Jose Downtown Association's SJ storefronts initiative that showcased San Jose's city pride gear. And as recently as 2021, the City of San Jose's Economic Development Team reached out to us to advise them on how to leverage the San Jose wordmark that Native Digital developed to have the grassroots buy-in and authenticity that it so deserves. As part of our commitment as a certified B Corp, we donate to local nonprofits and have a pro own and design program. We've offered both formal and informal mentorship to local independent businesses, advising them on everything from how to price their products, how to negotiate a lease, to how to set up and run an e-commerce shop. We're so excited to be able to invest in San Jose and to galvanize a sense of belonging and civic pride here, bringing world-class retail with authentic local flavor rooted in community to San Jose International Airport. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. My name is Sheridan Mordu and I am the owner of Hip &amp; Humble. We have been in business for just over 25 years. I founded it just after I graduated from college. About five years ago, we partnered with Parity's Lagadere and we have been able to share and grow my women-owned business through airports across the country. We have nine contracts to date, thank you very much. And I am here today to express extreme gratitude and excitement for being a part of your airport and especially a part of your community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Rachel Ramirez. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. It's an absolute pleasure to be here. I'm an ACDBE for Parity's and have been a partner for over 10 years. As a woman and minority-owned business, this has been an incredible opportunity for me and my family. And also, one of my personal passions is mentoring and really growing other small businesses because it has made such an incredible difference in my own life. I'm absolutely committed to doing that for small businesses in San Jose and I'm so thankful for the opportunity. One of my core values, I have four core values that I live by, one of them is to seek inspired solutions. Parity's Lagadere does that and from what I've heard today, so do you guys. Also, to apply uncommon integrity, never more important than in today's world. That's something that I will do and I commit to you to do that. Also, to create a lasting impact. That's something that when you grow a small business, you create a lasting impact. It makes a difference and I hope to make a difference in San Jose. Finally, building enduring partnerships. I'm excited to work with the small businesses in San Jose, as I've worked with the small businesses in other cities representing Parity's Lagadere and representing my own company. I appreciate you guys. I appreciate the hard work of the Airport Director and the team. And I'm committed to being a great partner and representing San Jose and all the small businesses that we've yet to identify that are going to have an opportunity to work at the airport. And finally, I'd like to mention that we have entered into a labor peace agreement. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Well, good afternoon. My name is April Stewart. I am a first-generation entrepreneur and founder and CEO of Skyview Concessions. I am absolutely thrilled to be here today. As an ACDBE partner, I was also awarded the AMAC Small Business Partner of the Year Award. And this is going to be one of my roles as a joint venture partner with Parity's. I will have the privilege of working with small businesses and local businesses and introducing them to Parity's. And I think it's a wonderful platform to make it available for local, small businesses to scale their business. So we're super excited about that. I grew up here in this area and I spent many hours on San Jose State's campus. I also want to express my sincere gratitude to this council and also to the distinguished airport concessions team for a well-executed concessions contract. Thank you.
Back to council.
Thank you all for the enthusiastic public comments. I'm so excited to, that you are currently in San Jose and coming to San Jose. I can't wait to actually fly out of the airport to take advantage of your services, to buy from your shops, and just meet you and participate there. It's very exciting to hear your enthusiasm and I particularly love that the majority are women-owned minority businesses. I, big shout-out to women business owners, as a former business owner myself. That's really awesome. So you've checked the boxes, local, women, minority. It's fabulous. I'm so excited that this is coming through and I hope, it seems by how many council members want to speak, that they're enthusiastic about it as well. So I will move to them. Councilmember Mulcahy.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm really proud to have the airport in District 6 that I represent and also serve as the liaison to the Airport Commission and look forward to, you know, a lot more experience working with you and your team, Mookie. Thanks for the great presentation. I was hoping, just a couple of things, let me start with this. I think probably one of my biggest beefs about San Jose is whether you're in a lobby of one of our hotels or in the airport, finding something cool is really hard. And just hearing what we're talking about, trying to express really what San Jose is through a lot of the vendors that are being included here, I think is really wonderful and I think will speak well to San Jose and, you know, the airport as one of our most important gateways and one of the most important economic drivers of our city. So just kudos to the process. Can you just do a little quick and dirty for us on the layers of the packages? You know, just, I had to sort of go through it a few times. It's sort of a little bit of my background in business too with leasing and whatnot, but there's a few layers here to each of the packages and players involved. So we heard from Hudson, we heard from Parity's. So can you just kind of layer it in for us on the two packages and who the players are, so everybody understands that?
Yeah. So the prime concessionaires is a term that we use in this part of the industry. The prime concessionaires are Hudson and Parity's. They have entered into joint ventures or one has, is a joint venture with April's company. And so together, they make the larger capital investment and the revenues and the profits are through a joint venture. The Hudson RFP has a participation of small, minority, women-owned businesses in that package. When we issued this RFP, it's, we could have done one larger program, but we wanted to introduce competition into the marketplace. And we believe that, you know, tide rises all boats. So opportunity to excel at the capital investment and then the opportunity to lure that customer in that footfall, you understand the word "footfall" very well, into the store is really key. So the package, I'll ask Rebecca if she's got anything else to add, but we mixed the program so it was balanced in the sense that some of the stores are a little larger than other stores, but introducing the store within a store allows them to maximize the revenue and the flow and the dwell time inside of these stores. But if I'm answering your question correctly, there's two primes. There was three bidders. These were the two that received the highest scores. We did prioritize capital investment and revenue as a priority into this, as well as the experience. And those two were the two winners, just structured a little differently.
Great. Thank you for that. So the other thing to explore is, you know, I'm a 60-day council member, right? But I've been in the development business. I've seen lots of pretty pictures get, you know, presented and unfortunately, at the end, it doesn't always turn out that way, right? So we're at concept, photos of, and names and things that we've seen. What is the process from today after negotiation and so forth that sort of gets us to the deliverable of what the store looks like and, you know, who's sort of the Q, the quality control group in terms of making sure we get what we thought we were supposed to get?
Yeah. So the airport has airport architects on staff and we have a robust airport planning and engineering team. We have actually an extensive program that Rebecca led about a year ago on a Form A, Form B tenant improvement process. And so there's a rigorous review that's sent around to the entire airport team. And so there's a rigorous review that's sent around to the entire airport team, everybody from safety, security, ops, customer experience. Everybody has an equal voice in opining on the installation. The planning and engineering team will kind of lead the effort in terms of constructability, challenges. We experienced challenges with our food program because there's ventilation, there's sewer pipes that need to be moved, and drainage that needs to be accommodated. With retail, it's a little bit more simple, it's simpler. It's mostly just power and installation of their fit and finish, a little bit more easier. But when it comes to the look and feel from the customer, that's more, our architect on staff will take that lead.
Okay. All right. With that, I think I'd like to move the item forward, 5.1.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Salas.
Mookie, I'd heard your name before, but I've never met you. I just want to tell you, I didn't discover San Jose. It's always been a secret. I didn't discover it until I was 23-years-old, and I love this city a tremendous amount, and I will die in this city because I love it so much, in spite of its challenges. But I have never been as proud as I am today to be associated with what you guys have pulled off with the process you started, with the folks you brought in. And I've always said, we just need to reveal San Jose for what it is, and to be able to walk into our gateway airport and reveal San Jose from the very get-go is a tremendous thing. And I have to thank you and your staff and for gathering all these wonderful people together.
It takes a team, council member. And in the audience today, we also have members of Rebecca's team, as well as her leadership in the audience, that were guiding us through this process. We also had an expert consultant that worked with us on the scoring matrix and the program itself when it was coming through ideation, so Stephen Freyburn's also in the audience today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dwan.
Well, I'm thrilled, and I think, thank you for all the work to bring our, you know, San Jose Airport to more vibrancy. And Vice Mayor said best, you know, local businesses, women businesses, and the minorities. Fantastic. Thank you. Great job.
Thank you. Finally, councilmember Kamay.
I just want to say how great this is, to see the combination of different businesses come together, and especially the small businesses. I just think that it's absolutely fabulous, and I'll be very excited to be able to get my Ube Latte over at Nirvana Soul, and I think that it also really reflects who we are at San Jose. I really, I really think that the businesses reflect who we are, and I think that it's wonderful to be able to have that as an introduction when people come in. So thank you to you and your team. It's just been a wonderful job.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands, let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. We'll now move on to open forum. If any member of the public would like to speak on any item that was not addressed on today's agenda, they may do so now. Please turn in a public comment card. Tony, do we have any?
Brian Darby.
After a minute, I'm glad I came back. You folks are fun-to-watch work. This is the city of innovation, so I'd like to put forward an idea that maybe we can find alternative ways to develop energy. I was just reading a bunch while I was listening to everybody talk. I'm not much of a physicist, and I don't know much about, I know a lot about electronics, but I'm not an engineer, and I just hope that we could come up with some innovation that would really make eventually energy free. One place that it's solar energy, there's a place called Barefoot University, and it's in India, and they teach people from around quote-unquote "third-world" countries how to develop solar energy that helps pump fresh water. Imagine not having water coming into even your village. And I think that's, I'd recommend you all look that up. And it is run by, it teaches primarily women, and it teaches people from all around the world. Thank you.
Thank you. So concludes open forum, and we stand adjourned.